Lead card order. That roll call.
Dr. Robinson, here. Mr. West.
Here.
Dr. Bunch, here. Mrs. Square, Mr. James.
Here. Okay. Anything on the agenda to be moved at this time?
I would like to first and here report movement to the board.
Okay.
I am eight point two.
Anything else? Matt?
I mean that we adopt the agenda as amended?
Second.
Moving second all in favor?
Uh.
This is five zero. Public comments?
None.
None, okay. Five, recognition, presentation, school board recognition week. Okay.
Mr. James, members of the board, this is our school board recognition week. And I know that you all don't serve a huge salary that you get money. And we're always talking about a return on investment. And we know that you all invest a lot of time, a lot of dedication, a lot of focus to Natchez Adams School District. This is just a need to say that we appreciate you all for what you do. And as I posted on today, your return on investment is not acknowledged. What your return on investment is what we pour into the students of Natchez Adams School District and this community. And the return is when you see students succeed. And for that and for your vision that you have for Natchez Adams School District and your laser focus on making certain that this district improves daily, annually, continues improving. For that, we want to say thank you. And so as you see, we have a few tokens of appreciation from staff members. And we're gonna ask Mr. Fields to come and assist us. We do have a proclamation that I would like to read. It reads, "From the office of the governor, whereas an excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life of our communities and to the economic development throughout our state. And whereas school board members work to ensure that the organizational mission of properly educating students is being achieved by always keeping educational achievement as the primary focus as students are prepared for future successes. And whereas school board members are entrusted by the parents and the community with the oversight and responsibility of the maintenance, development, and operation of Mississippi's public education districts. And whereas school board members represent a tremendous resource as local decision makers interacting with parents and other members of the community, diligently working to meet the challenges of a dynamic world while ensuring that every student receives the opportunities and services needed for a quality education. And whereas, school board members establish a vision for the education program, design a structure to achieve that vision, adopt policies that support student achievement, ensure schools are accountable to the parents and community, and allocate strongly for continuous improvement in student learning. And whereas, school boards are also entrusted with the wise expenditure of financial resources as well as the stewardship and maintenance of the buildings, grounds, and other school district resources. Whereas, local school board members are appointed and elected by the people of their communities. And they deserve recognition and gratitude for their countless hours of service to public education in Mississippi. Now therefore, I, Tate Reeves, governor of the state of Mississippi, do hereby proclaim the week of February eighteenth through twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, as school board member recognition week in Mississippi. I urge all stakeholders to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of school board members and in working with them to create an education system that meets the needs of all learners. Signed by Governor Tate Reeves." Signed by the governor. So, Mr. Fields along with some of our administrators. I have tokens. I will provide, I present to you these certificates of recognition. Mr. Fields, go ahead.
All right, we do have our administrative team here to present to you on today on behalf of their schools. So first we'll call up Morgantown Elementary, Principal Sandra Jones. Signed by the governor.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Sandra Jones, president and principal at Morgantown Elementary. And with assistance of Mr. Fields. My family and I present to you a school boy survival kit. In your wonderful bag, it has lifesavers to remind you that you are a lifesaver. There are trusty rolls to help you roll with your punches. It includes stoppers for a burst of energy when you need one, wherever you be down. Peppermint patties to help you keep your cool when we call you at twelve o'clock at night. Snickers to remind you to keep your sense of humor. Bubble gum to help you get through the sticky situations. And kisses to show you all the love you deserve. It's enough love in those little bags to last a lifetime. Awesome, awesome, awesome job on a daily basis. We appreciate you and we couldn't pay you for the job that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your box, making your talk over there.
Well, to follow that will be the principal of McLauren Elementary.
Your name and face, we don't need nothing else.
I'm Tate Reeves. On behalf of McLauren Elementary, we want to thank you for everything you do for us. I wanted to give you a little piece of McLauren. At McLauren, our kids know when we say McLauren Bulldogs, we bark. We are be respectful, act responsible, remember safety, and kindness matters. So we gave you a little piece of us and we thank you for everything you do and your support, trust on your behalf. There you go, Mr. James. Thank you and please come visit anytime. The blue card is the first voice.
All right, next we will have Dr. Latoya Scott Haven from West Elementary.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board. We are very excited to give you a token of appreciation. I apologize for my tardiness, had to make sure that everybody got home safely. I do apologize for my tardiness. However, I do want to give you appreciation, a token of appreciation from us at West Elementary. And we did have cards as well to advance.
All right, from Natchez Middle School, the team. We're all nation. The nation. The nation. And even Bulldog Nation.
Mister President, members of the board, we would just like to appreciate, give you a gift of appreciation. Thank you for your hard work, all that you do for the students of Natchez Adams School District, teachers, staff, parents, schools. Again, thank you.
All right, from Natchez Early College. I'm sorry from, oh. Team where we're making dreams, working for Valley Career Technology Center. Mr. Cleveland Moore and from Natchez Early College at Colleen, Principal Heather Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Fields, good evening, Mr. James, President, members of the board. We would just like to thank you for your hard work and dedication. And we brought some tokens of appreciation. We don't have a big bag, we do have something that you can take. You will enjoy, you go to Route sixty-one. Yes, thank you, thank you. So we thank you all and let you do your hard work and dedication on behalf of the two biggest schools in the nation.
Mr. Rolex?
No, it's something you need. Something good he laid on, Matt.
And now, representing the capital of Bulldog Nation, Principal Larry Hooper.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board. On behalf of, sorry, Ms. Rainey too as well, on behalf of Miss Reynolds, and us thirteen and Natchez High School, principals, I'm sorry, teachers, most important, our students, parents, our stakeholders. We just want to thank you for the support and dedication. Make sure we have everything that we need in every high school and surely get, make sure that our students get the best possible educational opportunity to deserve everything in a safe environment. So we appreciate you. Also, something to return. Dr. Morris?
Double Morris.
Appreciate you, Dr. Morris.
Thank you.
Will there be more? Thank you all, let's give our board.
Come back again, take a minute. It is equal, you can wear a pink if you want to. It is yellow too.
All right.
Thank you all, thank you.
Unnecessary book.
Thank you all very much, appreciate you.
All right. I could say unnecessary books.
Yeah, as board members, yeah, we lose a lot of sleep at night. We do. Well, I do, I don't move like that. Thinking about you all, wanting you all to be happy, just seeing. And we love what you all do for us. And you say you love it, but all it can and can't. He left me eat all that, so it's gonna happen. But next year, to make it easy, it's like y'all can put five dollars a piece for each school and give a gift card and that's all you have to do. You don't have to spend all your money on this thing and all that. I don't receive gifts at all, birthdays, Christmas, none of that. I got everything I ever want. You don't have to spend all your money.
So check, mic check, one two. Name was just picking on the hat himself. But really, everything that I do, I do for teachers, administration, and especially the students. And it gives me great pleasure when you all come in here with views of good things that's happening in Natchez Adams School District. And it wouldn't be if it wasn't for you. Our job here is to make sure that you have everything, every resource that you need to continue to have our students at the top. So, thank you all again.
All right, now five point two. Mr. James, members of the board, it's that time again where we recognize our superintendent scholars. For the second nine weeks, second nine weeks, we have a total of one hundred and seventy-seven superintendent scholars.
What's the qualification for superintendent scholar?
Oh, ladies. Yeah, I, I look where? Let's recognize our students from McLauren Elementary School. Superintendent scholars, Morgantown Elementary School. West Elementary School. Above and beyond. Natchez Middle School. Representing for the seventh grade. Natchez High School, the capital of Bulldog Nation. Natchez Early College at Colleen. All right, like I said, we had one hundred and seventy-seven superintendent scholars, four hundred and ninety-nine principal scholars, those students A's and B's. So we are making it happen. And we are thankful for the hard work of our students and definitely our teachers. Five point three.
Good evening, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Rainey. We have before you a copy of Monday's school board update at Natchez High School. Page one of the accountants is not changed, meaning that the month of February has not come to the end. Therefore, the next board meeting will have the February information. Our elements, Miss Reynolds asked me to make sure I talk to you about the allocation of resources on page two. You see the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-two, and twenty-three respectively. Our school received no school improvement funding due to the fact that we were not under school approval, thankfully. The elements, Reynolds, want me to share with you all that we do have approximately fifty-three thousand dollars coming in closer before the end of school year, so we're looking for some type of funding. Any questions, any information that we have. Let's say everything on page one, that you all have already received and information that I've already sent to you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Approve of minutes, January the twenty-third, twenty-three, special meeting minutes. And January the twenty-third, twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. We get approved.
So moved. Second.
And moving second all in favor? Okay, out of number seven, approve or consent item. Okay, we approve anything, any consent you'd like to move? If not, we approve.
Move that we approve all of the consent items? Seven?
It's been moving seven all in favor?
Uh.
I have this, I do. Give me an excellent question. Oh, Mr. Bird?
Yes, sir.
So on the seven point six, we're putting out for bids for our bank?
Depository, yes, sir.
So it's been three years out?
It's been three years, and it is June twenty-fourth. So effectively July one, we have to pay off the bid.
And all things?
Yes, definitely, yes. There's like one, I think, because it's not included because I think it's on the board with that.
Right.
But yeah, every other bank will be.
And you send that, do you send something so we can get signature?
Well, yeah.
What you call it, when you send it out?
We're like, we're gonna do.
Send it received.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna advertise it. And so exactly, it's gonna be open for everybody. And then when they follow up, they'll be, they can get the RFP if they're interested. And I'll personally follow up with the contact that I have from before to make sure that they saw it and they have a chance to do it.
Let me ask her.
Yes, sir.
I want to ask a question. Will the time that the RFPs would be due, will that be on a day when we are meeting?
Well, yeah, definitely, I'm going to, we're gonna advertise and get all that out there. But whenever we get them, I will bring them before the board and we can, you'll be able to find out exactly who all submitted a bid. And then we will take it under advisement and review it and then come back with a decision based on the information that we're considering.
I think I understood my question.
I'm sorry.
Will there be a scheduled board meeting on a date that is advertised to receive the RFPs?
Yeah, we will come up with a date. Because it hasn't been advertised yet, I don't have.
That's not what I'm asking. Normally, when you send out the RFP to a certain extent, on a daily basis, there's a particular date, you know.
That it has to be received by?
No, but the board is, you, the RFPs normally line up with a regular schedule.
Yes, we outline when you gotta get them by and it's spelled out when we're gonna have it open at the board meeting, all there and we'll.
No, I don't mean that when you say, okay, okay.
I mean, it's just I haven't, we haven't selected dates to put the RFPs.
And I'm saying before you select a date.
Yes.
See if you could select a date that the board is scheduled to meet.
Yes, yes, sir, that's the goal, to make sure to have that happening. Because we have your schedule and it's gonna happen before the end of this year. So yes, sir, it's gonna be one of them.
I guess we were miscommunicating. But you were saying bring them before the board and I'm saying the board receives them on a particular date.
So in other words, what are they saying? How long do we use to leave them out? About how many months?
Um, yeah, at least, at least a two month.
So let's just say, this is.
April.
April board meeting, let's say you want them back in April. So we want the date that all bids need to be received, turned back in on a board meeting date. So April the third, we meet the third Tuesday in April, or the third Tuesday in May, or something like that. We want that, that last day where all of them be returned. Can we do that, bro, that sure?
Oh, yeah.
And we want it to be on a board meeting date, so when you bring them in, they all be right here on the table. And then you take them back for consideration.
Yes, sir.
Like it, so make sure that the day that all bids are required be on a board meeting date.
Yes, sir.
So that'll be April the sixteenth.
Yes.
Okay.
That will be spelled out for sure.
All right. Thank you. Eight point one is moving, I think you said. So eight point two, you up again?
Oh, it's me.
This is the claim document.
Yes, sir. Yeah, before you, out of eight point two, the approval of claim documents and acceptance of financial reports. Included within your documents are the claim documents filed this day, January twenty-sixth, and January twelfth. Additionally, the January twenty-fourth financial reports are there along with the capital project sum. If there aren't any questions, it is recommended that the board trustees approve the formalities and comings document and accept the financial reports, the five required financial reports that's presented to the board for review.
So moved.
Second.
And moving seven all in favor?
Thank you. And our members of the board, we have not forgotten your request for us to have the budget expenditures, ISA responsibilities, and those two you all. You'll have them by Friday.
Let's go to eight point three.
Eight point three, Mr. James, members of the board, is approval of student travel. As you see, we have a number of trips that are proposed. We have students who are going to the science museum. A college tour that's Island C, Tallahassee, Florida. We have members of the Natchez Early College, who will be traveling to Florida for a college tour. Surge Entertainment, Concordia Parish Court, the museum, the aquarium. And then the Natchez High School Choir is requesting to travel to Fidelia, to the day high schools participate in that Black History Program. So it is the recommendation that the board approves these student travel requests.
Let me ask you something on the trip to Florida.
Yes, sir.
Is the district is taking care of that, right?
The students, the students want to participate in a number of fundraisers, but they are also allocation for our federal programs that will assist them as well.
Are they going on a school bus, a charter bus?
No, sir, a chartered bus, a chartered bus.
So we've got this all mapped out, right?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the student travel as presented. Second.
Mr. McDonald, yes? How much is the charter bus going cost?
I don't have that information, you have the information?
I think it's roughly six to seven thousand.
How much?
Six to seven thousand.
Six to seven thousand?
Six, it's between six and seven thousand.
And a part of that will be paid by the students themselves.
As you can see on your cover sheet, there's a four hundred dollar cost to students. That is a rough estimate, but again, they are afforded the opportunity to participate in fundraisers that will detract funds, subtract from that amount.
So moved.
We already did.
We all been, all in favor? All in favor.
Who didn't?
I didn't.
So y'all all in favor? Okay.
One other question, about how many kids would be going?
Right now, it's approximately thirty.
These are all seniors or different grades?
Juniors and seniors.
Juniors and seniors.
So they going, y'all going? Y'all all in favor?
Yes, sir.
But any big man, y'all will let them go?
He wanna know if you gonna let them go?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, that's true.
Hey, they, y'all ain't go five zero.
Okay.
Okay, all right, eight point five.
Eight point five is the approval of user facility request. The Natchez High School baseball team, Allpoint State University and Southern University have requested to use the baseball field, excuse me, to host a baseball game between Allpoint State University and Southern University. And this is for March ninth and tenth of this year. So it is the recommendation that we approve the use of this facility to host those two games.
Is that field gonna, excuse me, is that field gonna be ready because they're doing some repair?
We are hoping that it's ready.
Was this probably a request from the baseball coach?
Yes, yes.
Second. She moved.
All in favor?
Awesome, awesome.
This is five zero.
We're going back to the bucket day. Yes.
The county is going to work for the, in terms of, very big field.
Okay. That was eight point five?
Yes.
Okay, eight point six.
Good evening, President.
Good evening, President James, members of the board, Superintendent Miss McDonald Green. For you, bring, um, the approval of bid for additional watchdog security camera equipment. If you think back, this goes, um, along with our Big Cops Grant, we find it to the point to where we're ready to approve. Um, now, the electronic and mail bids were received and opened on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and there were four bids from the following companies, um, which are listed. The after review of the, uh, bid specs, Incare K twelve was invited to reverse auction. It was held on Tuesday, December fifth, twenty twenty-three, from ten to eleven AM. The auction started with the opening bid of one hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, um, ended with the lowest bid of one hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars from Incare, which we had a little hiccup there. So, because of a minor informality, a second reverse auction was held on Tuesday, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, from ten AM to eleven AM. Incare K twelve and Academic Technologies were invited. The auction started with an opening bid of one hundred sixty-nine thousand and ended with the lowest bid of ninety-six thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars from Incare again. Um, it is the recommendation, it is recommended that the board trustees grant permission to accept the bid from Incare K twelve.
So move. So, Academic Technologies, they had the higher bid than the second?
Right, they had the higher of the two.
Just, just making sure.
Question. Uh, you see the cops grant? That's why.
That's what we have.
Yes, sir.
So, is that, is that fair?
Right. So, we had a match on the, um, a twenty percent match, and then they paid the seventy-five percent.
But we are making sure that the requirement of the federal process is being.
Correct.
Done properly.
Correct, yes, sir.
That's why.
You've already been done, seven, you wait on the vote.
Actually, this is falling right in line with something that I want to discuss, discuss later on.
Okay, and.
I believe she ma, you made a motion in.
She made a motion, she said.
Somebody, I thought I was, you said?
Right. All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, pass five zero. So it's all cameras now?
So this will be cameras for, um, McLauren, Morgantown, West, and Bray. And what we're doing is replacing basically the location that we have, just, um.
But they can run in with it.
Right. Well, yeah, but they will. It'll be the same location. Well, you see cameras, they not, it'll be new work grade.
Quiet, you don't tell anybody, be moving the man.
Thank y'all.
All right, okay. All right, then we have the eight point seven.
Good afternoon again, Superintendent Green, um, President James, board members. Uh, it is a request for the proposal of the Hub Network Consulting Service for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year for Mathis High School and Mathis Middle School for social emotional learning services. Um, this, this group will help decrease the social conflict for social emotional learning and also promote positive educational experience. It is the recommendation for the approval of the request for the consulting service from Hub Network, the internal service for both Mathis High School and Middle School.
Where is this co, company located at?
Um, I'm based out of, uh, Ripley, uh, Mississippi. That's where the owner is, Ripley, Mississippi, but their consultants are, um, regional.
So we don't have a contract with them right now. This is something new.
Yes.
Is there anything that precipitated this?
Yes, sir. We have, we've seen an uptick in some issues at the middle school and the high school when it comes to discipline. Uh, we've seen another, a number of students who have difficulty with conflict resolution, a number of, uh, disruptive behaviors that we've seen an uptick in, and so the principals, uh, expressed that they need someone to come in to support students in trying to, uh, learn strategies in order to decrease those behaviors.
Okay, let me ask you this, for this, you required to come out of our town, whatever, kind of, whatever.
No, sir, this comes out of, uh, federal fund, capital fund.
Capital fund, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, next move.
Second.
Moving seven, all in favor?
Uh. And, and Miss McDonald, um, let's do say that when we were in Jackson, we are not alone in this issue.
Absolutely not.
You know, social and emotional learning is on the radar all over the country.
Yes.
Because of, well, varieties of experts, you know, technology, and lots of, lots of issues that students are having trouble with conflict resolution.
Yes.
And then we've also got a mixed gender view, I know all of us over there, but the, the known health of so many children.
Absolutely.
That's a major contributing factor to these kinds of.
What, what we, what we discovered in a lot of cases is, students don't even have the language to express what's going on with them, whether that's internally or externally. And so instead of, so since I don't have the language, and I just strike out, or I use inappropriate words, and so we're gonna have them try to capture the language that they need to express what they're feeling, express what they need, and find means to resolve conflict without, uh, using force.
Did, did you, I, I would, I would imagine you did, um, do some background on the organization that you're contacting with?
Yes.
As relates to their success rate.
Yes, and the principals have talked with those, um, that, that particular group, they've, they've talked to them, they've talked.
And, um, I wish these consultants could go into houses as well, because the parents need help. You know, it's, it's a TikTok going around now where the parent, which is young, closes the door, and lets the children curse.
Absolutely.
It's getting, why? And then you wonder why kids act the way they are.
And one of the things, one of the workshops that I attended, and not attended none of them, but there was an emphasis put on meeting kids where they are.
Yep.
Okay, and that, that's kind of all encompassing. You gotta, you can't deal with every kid in the same way. There are kids who need special kinds of services or whatever the case may be. And we gotta realize that because we have the socio-economic and all the other kinds of things that are coming to play, as best we can, we need to deal with children as individuals and collectively, in terms of what their needs are. And that kind of thing, not that we can supply all those needs, but we gotta know what the needs are to give us the opportunity to, 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 you know, address them, so to speak, as best we can, including parents. Because, I guess I shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna say it anyway, you know, they had this conviction of, of parents, uh, they still on trial, I, I, you know, I haven't been able to keep.
Oh, my.
For neglecting their child, you know, whatever, things like that. Well, before I let the legislature, I want to appeal to be drafted to do that kind of thing, to hold some parents accountable under certain circumstances. Not just extreme, but also if you see a kid with a pattern, uh, from the third, first grade to the eighth grade, and they always in trouble, and da-da-da, and da-da-da. Uh, they're not getting good parenting. I'm not saying it's always the case, but they're not, they're getting good parenting because, you know, and, and there'd be, sometimes there are legitimate reasons they don't get good parenting. Sometimes they're working two jobs and whatever, sometimes, a lot of times, they don't have men in their households or fathers with them and all that kind of thing. So, but when somebody is completely neglecting children as a parent, ye, and there's a pattern of that that, that goes on year after year, or whatever, I just think they ought to be able to account myself. That's just my belief. Because if you don't.
But we are not alone in, in, in this social and emotional learning, according to the state statistics and nationwide.
Right.
So, we, everyone's having to address this and spend our time and energy on these things that we used to not.
That's correct.
But it's just a reality, and it's unfortunate.
But again, meeting kids, where, and some of the things we're doing, we finally do that.
We gotta take a vote? A key to the main vote?
Oh, there's.
Okay.
That's what I.
I know it's been a while.
It's a little short now.
That's the way to talk.
I know, see that? I talked to him.
Yeah.
I don't know what it's called.
We're gonna move on, eight point. Eight, eight point eight, see, I, got me messed up, you see what I'm saying? Eight point eight.
Eight point eight is considered a resolution as you are board chair. Uh, we have, uh, had a, uh, request, a proposal from Priders, Reportings, and the Southwest Wellness Association of Mississippi to use, uh, portions of the facility at Fraser for their, uh, community-based services and youth, uh, oriented, uh, uh, youth-based, uh, services as well. So working with Attorney, Attorney Keenly, uh, we, he has drafted a, um, proposed draft of a resolution in order to allow that, uh, partnership to occur.
Okay, let me ask you this. Let me ask you this, does the resolution specify the specifics of the contract, or just the resolution gives reason for making?
The resolution reflects the findings of fact by the board that permits the board to enter into the lease.
Okay.
Some of the specific, uh, provisions are covered in the resolution, such as requiring, uh, them to maintain insurance, uh, things of that nature. Not all of the elements of the lease are included in the resolution. The point of the resolution really is to get.
Just to.
Y'all in position.
Yes, that's exactly what I. Yes, yes, I wanted to make sure because we'd have to, we'd, we would see a copy of the found, we'd see the proposal.
Of course, yes, yeah. I, I, I just in, in the, the resolution, uh, had a start date of March the first, and for, for a period of the year, renewable, uh.
Annual renewal?
Yes, thank you.
And then we, we discussed that, I guess.
Right.
All right.
So we need a motion on the resolution.
Right.
I'll offer that as a motion for the eight point eight.
Second.
Is it moving seven, all in favor? Okay, it passes five zero. Eight point nine.
Eight point nine is consideration of a resolution, uh, for Delta Data, Zeta, Delta, Omega Chapter.
Go ahead.
To use the facility at Water, these portions of the facility at Water, these, um, magnet school. They've also provided, uh, the information that we requested of them regarding their youth initiatives and their community-based services.
So this is not the contract, this is the same.
The same.
Same.
Same, same, same.
Yes, resolution.
Yes.
So move. Second.
Moving seven, all in favor? And it passes five zero. All right. Who we got here? Eight, eight, oh, yeah, I was gonna. Okay, let's do, move to the six, now point one, third day.
You don't have eight.
None at this time.
No, I'm not. Okay, now point two.
Good afternoon, Mister James, members of the board, Mrs. McDonald Green, um, and, um, central office leadership. For your review and, and, um, comments, you have the, uh, federal programs ARP E S R three overview. It shows you the original allocation and just a professional reminder that the, um, funding ends December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, with all obligations having, having to be completed by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. In the bottom portion of the document, it shows you our January twenty twenty-four purchases and the total for January purchases. Are there any questions?
I don't see. Say. This don't do okay.
So the payroll at January twenty twenty-four, when that, when that's gone, where, where will that payroll come from?
Ask again, I can barely hear you.
So, January twenty twenty-four purchases, uh, payroll, you have twenty-two thousand, nine hundred eighty-one, after that, after that's gone. So that's the end of, that's the end of the E S R funding for that particular salary line? Will it be pulled from, will it be pulled from somewhere else?
No, ma'am, if I'm understanding you, no, those are only the, um, the portion of those staff's, um, salary for January. E S R is able to pay salaries until, um, September of this year. At, at that point, per U S D O E, uh, notice, no salaries can be paid after September twenty twenty-four.
That's just for, uh, January. If you look at item number thirty-four. You'll see that, that last column, that's the amount that is remaining that we have. And so for each of those, we still have a mon, uh, money left to pay for those salaries. Uh, now, next year will be.
That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. What we got in there? We have, um, board calendar, and it ain't need to be added to take away, give it to Davis. Now, point four.
I'm gonna have a few other things. The applaudi department, as you all know, that this year, both our boys and girls team were, uh, 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 blessed to enter into, uh, district turn, uh, district play. Uh, unfortunately, our boys, uh, basketball team lost to Wayne County this past Saturday, the score thirty-four to forty-one. So that ends their season. However, our girls' basketball team won versus East Central Basketball on this past Friday. They will play at Pearl River, Pearl River Community College this Friday, uh, I think it's six o'clock, at six o'clock. Beta Conventions, our high school, uh, beta members are attending the senior, uh, Mrs. State's Beta Convention, uh, in Biloxi. They will be there through tomorrow. Uh, we received notice today that we have had students to place in the robotics competition, uh, and the spelling, so we're, we're not quite certain of their placement. They'll, they'll get that information tomorrow.
Poetry as well.
Poetry as well. So we're excited, uh, for them, uh, the students work through the weekend. I didn't see my son this weekend, but they worked through the weekend to make sure that they were prepared for competition. And we thank Mister Briggs and Miss James, because they were right there with the students throughout the weekend. And when I say when they were there, I think Friday, they left around eight, eight o'clock P M. So we're, we're thankful for, for them. Uh, so we'll be excited to see those results on tomorrow. The elementary beta members will attend their state convention. They will leave tomorrow, and they will be in Biloxi through Friday. So we are just excited to see our students compete on a state level, and also to see, uh, uh, their placement, uh, in some of the competitions today.
What are we competing in? What are the elementary kids?
They have the same areas. They have theirs. I think we're competing in art at one of the schools. The, the arts, um, spelling bee. Writing and photography, or number competitions, yeah. The parents of, of the elementary students, they're a little nervous, but the children are excited. Mister Bird's daughter will be leading home for the first time, she's a fourth grader, so they all was excited with Tim and Denise, like, they're nervous.
I remember when, uh, Tony was at Morgan, and my son was on his first beta trip, fourth grade. And so I got him a cell phone. I said, you keep this phone with you at all times. Don't take it off in your body. Okay. So, in the meantime, I had a conference in Las Vegas. I get a call from Tony Fields. And he said, well, I know you've been calling your child, you've been learning about him and everything. He said, uh, something happened to his phone. I said, how? He said, well, you told him to keep it on his body, and he went swimming. Think so.
Uh, unbuzement, uh, has been experienced in staff and shortage. Uh, one of their, uh, team members is out on leave and we have not, they have not been able to secure, uh, someone to replace him or. So until that, uh, employee returns or is replaced, they have requested to allow students to do temporary virtual life with those new in, new incoming students. Uh, right now, I think we have about four or five students who would be in this, uh, situation. Uh, I have spoken to, uh, Ms. Giles, who is the director, uh, Mr. Hayes, who is the regional director. Uh, they are going to provide students with the, the devices that they need. Uh, they will have constant contact with those teachers there. Uh, those students who do not have internet access, that team is going to work with those students personally. Uh, so hopefully this is only a temporary, uh, situation. Again, they just have a staff, staff in shortage, just as we do. It's difficult to even find substitute managers.
Your, your question, uh, buzzman, is it, this is just a contract you want to discuss?
This here is just information. This is information. The other information I have to discuss, we'll discuss.
Okay, let me ask you this, I, uh, how many kids have utilized their service thus far this year? Do you have?
I'm thinking that number is somewhere around about forty, forty-five students.
Throughout the year?
Throughout the year.
So not all at the same time?
No, sir. Because you know, you have, they, they're staggered, so you're, you may be there for, uh, a full year place and you may only be there for thirty days.
I think it would be good for us to get more specific on, on that at some point, especially while we're discussing the contract, to make sure that that there's not any, whether or not we need to please be considered one another ways.
Okay, upcoming events, um, there are two events that you have on your flyer on the back. Uh, an evening of spirituals, the Natchez High School District String Orchestra, the Natchez High School Concert Choir, and the Natchez Middle School Choir chorus will present an evening of spirituals in this, that is this coming Thursday at the Natchez Middle School Auditorium, and that will begin at six o'clock P M. Uh, we know that they will do an awesome job as they have done in the past. Uh, we will have our second My Voice, My N, My N A S D community conversations, uh, with teachers. Uh, it is our plan to meet with various stakeholders. The first, uh, convening was for parents. This convening is for teachers, uh, in our, um, our survey, employee satisfaction survey that we, uh, submit, delivered to employees, I think it was in October, November. One of the things that teachers have, uh, talked about constantly, that was continuous in those comments, was that teachers need time. And we understand that they, uh, are tasked with a number of responsibilities as we continue to re- respond to COVID, as we continue to respond to unfinished learning and learning loss because of the pandemic. And so what we want to do is we want to meet with our teachers, uh, two days, February twenty-sixth and February twenty-eighth, in order to gather their, their input on how we can be more creative with the use of time, but also what tasks that we possibly, possibly can consider removing from teacher responsibilities. We just wanna make certain that we're listening to our employee concerns. As we are aware, our neighbors in Concordia parents are considering a four-day, uh, work week.
Yes.
And so we understand that we have to remain competitive in this area. If you all have seen the flyers from our local school district, they are looking for a number of employees. We want to be able to retain our certified and highly qualified teachers, but also we want to make this a situation where they're not overwhelmed, they're not overburdened, overtasked. So this will be an opportunity for them to work with us to give, to give us their feedback as to what they actually want to see. We can assume, or we want to hear from them.
We've considered that, are there any restrictions? Would we have to have it approved by the State Department of this?
If we were to consider a four-day work?
Four-day work.
Uh, I don't believe we would have to, uh, approve. I'm not quite certain on that. I would have to find that. What the state requires is that every school district, uh, uh, provides three hundred and thirty minutes of instructional minutes. We currently provide four hundred and one. And so again, I'm not quite certain what the, uh, what the expectations are, or guidelines are from the State Department. But before we even go into that consideration, we would have to find that information. Yes.
Ezra, I'd also be interested in if student, I mean, teachers are interested in planning times. You know, they don't mind being at the school, just not in the classroom all the time.
And those are the types of options that we, we've talked about several options.
Options. I mean, I, I, you know, I'm just not sure, but.
Yes.
Um, I, I know that Alcorn did that, you know, with a meeting time so that we could be sure that, that all meetings would happen on a Friday afternoon, say, for example. And, and also the day that, that would, that useful. And why? A rationale for why they would, that time and how they would use that time.
So we've researched some cre- uh, creative ideas that other districts have done. Uh, we've, uh, bounced ideas, central office staff have bounced out, uh, ideas of options that are presented. We spoke with Dr. Cook, uh, this past week. He gave us some other options to consider. And so again, we'll bring all of those to the table. This won't be a one-time, uh, convening. But we want to start this conversation, uh, because as we're planning for the next school year, we want to present those options to our teachers and see what is going to be most beneficial. We don't want to be, uh, we don't wanna jump on the bandwagon and say, hey, we're going to jump into because I believe that a four-day work week is something that we have planned for as a community, not just as a district, but as a community. And so if we can do something in the interim, uh, that is created, that is helpful to our teachers, that may be a long-term, uh, idea or thought that we consider, but we want to make sure that we start those conversations.
And I mean, I'm just a believer that if you ask teachers what they need, they'll tell you.
And so, and that's one of the things that we discussed, you know, as a community, we have to take these considerations. Uh, as I told someone, we shouldn't have to be overly concerned about childcare. Where there's citizens of this community, we do have to be concerned. And so we have to be concerned of elementary students who are out there who may not have proper supervision. We have to be concerned about those secondary students who are gonna be out there possibly in those. And so we have to take all of those things into, as a community, we would have to have those discussions. And I know that's something that our board members is doing with their community, but again, we, we, we have to start slow.
We're trying in the words to have kids born on, who have a thirteen, a twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old category.
We're fully aware.
What?
We're fully aware.
Okay, you know what we do.
Fully aware. Yes, sir. Those are all of my updates.
Mess up everything. Can't go out of town. All right. Okay, that's, that's it, man. Oh, the board, everything from the board.
Yeah. I have a lot of people I want to thank. The first person I want to thank is Mr. Melvin Davis for the things that he do within his district, within his district to keep our students safe.
Amen, amen.
All of our administrative principals, teachers, for the hard work that you all do to educate our students. And I wanna thank the Natchez Boys and Girls Basketball Team. I've had the pleasure to attend some of the games, and they were awesome. So I would like to give a shout out to everybody that I just wanted to thank.
I already knew something.
Um, on Sunday, I guess, you know, I think this COVID, COVID shots. I be losing my mind sometime. I can't remember what day or whatever. But I wanna say, we're gonna say Sunday morning at twelve-thirty A M., uh, my husband received a call that Albert Irving's house burned down. And he got out by only his underwear, literally. So everybody that knows Albert, uh, know he's a Hall of Famer. Um, he, he, uh, completed, he was one of the C two C, complete their degrees at Alcorn State because he left early, uh, he was drafted early, so he didn't complete. So he came back, I guess about two years ago, got his degree or whatever, and, uh, he's really a product of our community. I reached out to see if, uh, Alcorn, if, if, uh, Coach Bussey had a size fifteen shoe because there's no shoe sizes around here that, no shoe stores around here that even houses shoes that size. So he's doing what he can do to find, so, you know, if you find it in your heart. I just see him or whatever, you know, uh, give him some love. That's all I have to say. I, 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 I never wanna see anybody lose a home, a life, or anything, and, you know, so, uh, I can't say the supervisor, uh, gray, and, and my husband went around trying to find a size. That's, that was just ridiculous, you know, so they found him some crocs that he could stick his feet in, you know, but that, that's really sad. And I just hate to see our community, uh, you know, and then he's in a rural area. So in a manner, no time, the house is gone, just like that. And so, uh, Coach Irving, who is also a Hall of Famer, a long-time coach here in Natchez, they lost a lot of, number of.
Where did he live?
At Liberty Road. Past the bottom tier five. So just give me some love. Yeah, that's all I have to say. And once again, I said it before, I'm saying it again, thank every last one of you all for making that happen for us. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's me, yeah, fine. But I told somebody the other day, they was Miss Jack, she's home now. And she looked at me like I said, if you ever coming down six o'clock, child, and my house on fire, don't call about it. Did I told you that? Did I told you that? Don't call.
Right, right.
Long as I ain't.
Yeah.
Like I'm always on and whatever. If you ask me about some pictures, they what about all your pictures? I'm kidding you. They ain't took them by now. See, I ain't worry about no picture. My picture's at my mom's house. All my baby pictures, right? Yeah, she got pictures. So we good. No calls.
They on Facebook?
Yeah, but anyway, um, didn't see it.
Our promotion to have a sole determination?
Second.